Good morning. Seven o'clock already, short agenda. Welcome to the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission agenda today, there are speaker request forms along with table on the left wall, I think. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated over there. At this time, we would also like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. Item number one has been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. This item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. That item is item number one, the approval of the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission minutes.
Motion to approve item one.
I think since we're taking a separate motion, I won't ask if anybody wants to pull it, but if anybody wants a further discussion of the minutes, we sure can. Vince made the motion to approve those minutes. And Brooke seconded that motion? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Item number two.
Just waiting for the little green light. There it goes. Morning, Planning Commission. Cassie Hayes, current planner. Item number two is Initial Plan Development Overlay twenty-three P D O thirty-six. This is an Initial Plan Development Overlay request to allow a residential develop on property that is located at the Northern Terminus of Bridge Drive and the Eastern Terminus of Enin Drive, just to the east of Reservoir Road out in the valley. Currently zoned low-density residential one. Future land use is low-density neighborhood. Reservoir Road is listed as a proposed principal arterial as it's proposed to extend from where it does now, all the way north. Both Enin Drive and Bridge Drive are local streets. This was, or this request is part of a preliminary subdivision plan that was approved back in October of last year. It was approved to create a hundred and fifty-six residential lots and two drainage lots total. Within the planned unit development, or the planned development request, they are asking for eighty-four single-family residential lots that are intended for small homes and one drainage lot as well. This development is proposed in phases. So these eighty-four residential lots within the planned development are going to be part of Phase One A, One B, and Phase Two. As you can see up here, the small lots are mostly part of Phase One A. There is a big drainage lot that's also part of Phase One A, but the small lots are most of Phase One A. There are the small lots here within Phase One B. And then over here in Phase Two, there are the lots in this area as well, just those small lots as you see them there. So within those four phases. This is a depiction of the small lots in relation to their lot size as well, because along with this, they are asking for three exceptions. The first exception that they're asking for is an exception to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from eight feet to seven feet. They're asking for this because the proposed small homes are projected to be twenty-four by forty in size, which does not leave a whole lot of room on these lots for any sort of construction error on either side. Staff is recommending that to accommodate the potential construction error, one side or the other be reduced to seven feet, but the other side maintain an eight-foot minimum. The second exception that they're asking for is to reduce the minimum lot width at the front building line from fifty feet to forty feet. This reduction in lot width, according to the applicant's letter of intent, is intended to keep the lots small and affordable. And then the third exception that they're asking for is to reduce the minimum lot area for a dwelling served by a sanitary sewer system from sixty-five-hundred square feet to four thousand and forty square feet. Most of the proposed lots, this is kind of small to see, but most of the proposed lots within this planned development range in size at about forty-five-hundred square feet, with the smallest one being that four thousand and forty square feet. And there's actually two of them that exceed that sixty-five-hundred square foot lot size, and the biggest one is just right under that at about sixty-four-hundred square feet. The applicant has stated that Rapid Valley Sanitary District, which is who will service this development, did put a maximum number of lots that are allowed within this proposed subdivision because the sanitary sewer system downstream is not designed to handle more lots than what was proposed in the preliminary subdivision plan. So they are constricted to these lots as you see them here. So Rapid Valley Sanitary District is in concurrence with the eighty-four small lots as they are proposed. So staff is recommending approval of the Initial Plan Development Overlay with the stipulations outlined in the report. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Mike Kwasny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, are these lot sizes the same as the south of the Highway forty-four where we put them down in the? I think they're real similar to the size, aren't they? The development that's south of Highway forty-four?
Mr. Chair?
Vicki?
Thank you. Thank you for the question, and I think you're talking about Johnson Ranch?
Yes.
We did an experimental subdivision with Dream Design a few years back, and these are pretty much in line with that. I would say that these homes have got smaller footprints to the extent that they're, they're not two-story, and that's really to capture the affordability. I think some of the homes in the Johnson Ranch area ended up being two-story with basements, and the cost reduction got lost in the square footage within a limited footprint. So the benefit here is these are one-story structures, and it'll help maintain that affordability.
Okay. That said, is... You kind of brought it up, the cost savings. Is, is there, what is the expected normal price for the, for one of these houses on, on this? I don't know who would answer that question.
Mr. Chair?
Vicki?
If we could turn to the developer and potentially have them come to the lectern and share a little bit about what their projected market value is on these homes?
That'd be great if one of you, once you're up, if you could identify yourself.
Hi, Rob Pepple, Rapid City. Yeah, the price of the homes are going to be somewhere one-sixty to probably two-oh-five would be the top one.
Okay. It sounds like it's, some of these projects, it seems like we get into it and all of a sudden there, you really didn't save a lot. So that's really what I was asking, is how we make it affordable to the people that can afford them, so.
Actually, we are the ones that built out the entire subdivision of Johnson Ranch. We were the builders. And we were one-sixty to one-eighty-nine for unfinished basements, and then it, it was probably one-eighty-nine to two-ten for the finished basements, so.
Okay.
So those, that's what those homes all ended up being.
Okay. Well, if we can get people into homes and save, that's great. Are there any other problems that we've had, I guess, with the division, subdivision that was mentioned here? Are there any things with the smaller homes? Are we seeing any problems, or?
We're very happy homeowners. They really love it. You know, one of the things that we had, because we are so far below the market value, we had a lot of investors come in, and so one thing that we're going to do in this subdivision to maybe curtail that is we're going to do a deed restriction on these homes so that homeowners can actually buy them from the beginning, and then hopefully many years in the future, it's still all a homeowner neighborhood.
Pride and ownership.
So we're going to do a deed restriction, no long-term or no short-term rentals, and that hopefully will curtail all that, so.
Okay, good.
Just because of our price point is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Vicki? Missed you there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to go back to your question, when we looked at Johnson Ranch, and, and we did, we reviewed what had happened there in comparison to what we might see with a development similar. Truly at Johnson Ranch, the only issue that we sometimes hear complaints on is visitor parking. When you have reduced lot sizes, you have reduced street frontage, and that's harder for people to find places to park. Everyone's required to have two parking spaces, but we all know what it's like when you have teenage children that are driving or a family event and, and you have guests to the home. So these developers have worked with us, and Public Works has been great in considering this proposal as well. You'll see in their application that they are proposing three onsite parking spaces per lot. So that addresses the visitor parking. One of the things that we have to also address when we have smaller lots is garbage pickup. Where does that garbage can go at the, in the, adjacent to the street that doesn't interfere with the approach? And with this layout, we've ensured that there will be a spot for the garbage can to be pushed down to the curb on pickup day, and we will get that visitor parking available onsite. That still will leave in many instances some street parking, but it just opens up additional parking so that we don't have the complaints that there isn't sufficient visitor parking.
Vicki, I'm going to jump the line. I noticed one of the stipulations had no parking signs to be installed on both sides of the street. Is that basically all the streets that we're seeing in this?
I think they are in this section because of those lot frontages. Wherever we've got lots that do have sufficient area where you can park in the street and it doesn't impact a driveway, that there'll be consideration, but I think in this layout, for the most part, they'll have to be posted no parking.
And I guess going in, I was hoping Chip might be here, but.
I promised him I'd cover. He has a doctor's appointment today.
No worries. I, I guess I, my only question was, in the case of a neighborhood barbecue or something like that, do they, does the fire department, knowing that that may still happen, have any concerns? Tough one for you to answer, I know.
We deal with this right now in, in Rapid City. It's a, it's an ongoing issue. Some of you may recall, it's been several years, but this is property up south of Minnesota Street, behind Kirk Funeral Home. We did a rather, we approved a rather large subdivision where we have parking on one side of the street. My son just happens to live in one of those subdivisions right now, and he's on the side of, he lives on the side of the street that you can't park. And it's tempting. You pull up, you've got things to unload, you want to park right in front of that home, and I, and I see it. I see people doing it, and in those instances, it would be impossible for a fire truck to get through without taking out a vehicle. Those are very, very limited. We can enforce the no parking signs. Even our parking enforcement team can go out and ticket people if they're parked on a no parking side of a street or on a full street that has no parking, and this is an area that we will have to be looking at.
All right, I'll get back to the other folks. Haven?
Well, those were a couple of my questions. One was on the, on the parking, and the other, which is not quite relevant here, is I was wondering about the purchase price also. The other thing, I guess, is the, is the common areas here. What, yeah, what provision is made for some kind of a common area where kids or somebody can congregate?
I'm not sure who was the best to answer that, but Mike.
Good morning, Mike Toohey with Toohey Design Group. I don't know how to run any of this really cool equipment, but I can tell you, right here, there is a drainage lot.
Can you use the mic, please, Mike?
Yeah, maybe she can. Kathy will help you.
Right there. There's like a fairly large drainage lot. Right now, we are piping all the water under that lot. In the initial discussions with planning and engineering and Public Works, there was requests that we hold some area for parkland. We've offered this spot for common use. We have not heard back from the Parks Department, but there, that was a, a request from city staff a while back. So this lot, the only reason it's a drainage lot is because there's storm sewer piped underground. It could very easily have park or common ground put in that lot.
And just for my and maybe other people's information, part of this is some improvements on Enin and I think Bridge, and how will the improvements on those two streets coincide with the development and sale of the houses in this project?
Right now, there's not, the Bridge and Enin would be extended. The big one that's a part of this is we are plating against Reservoir Road, and so we're working with city staff to build the next half-mile of Reservoir Road. We'll have that set of plans that are going to city staff in the next month. But as far as the existing Bridge and Enin, there's no improvements planned on those.
So the, the access then will be improved in on Reservoir prior to the time that the homes are occupied?
Correct. Our first phase of the subdivision, which is One A and One B that Cassie had shown before, we will build those two phases simultaneously with Reservoir Road. And there's an access traverse drive, it's kind of on the top of the screen right here, that'll be connected in the first phase to Reservoir.
And this is Rapid Valley Sanitary District. I guess I had some questions on that and the city of Rapid City. What's the, yeah, maybe just geographically, what are we discussing there?
So if I could speak a little bit too about the timing of the streets, and then I'll defer to Roger on the boundary between Rapid Valley and the city for water and sewer. But on the street construction, whenever you see a project coming in, and, and you see these all the time, they're plating it, and they're either putting it within a planned development because they've got some unique design portions for the project, or they're coming in for a building permit. We can issue a building permit at such time as the infrastructure is being constructed for the subdivision component. That's your water, sewer, streets, and drainage. But before a certificate of occupancy is issued, all of those improvements have to be in and accepted by the city. So that's no different here. We safeguard that in all instances so that when that homeowner is pulling up after they've closed on a property and they want to move furniture in, they've got safe access and utilities to protect the home before anyone's occupying it. And with that, I'll defer to Roger on the boundary between utilities.
Roger?
There you go. Thank you. Yes, we, we have a, you know, agreement with Rapid Valley to sell them water, and then they sell us, or we, their sewer back. But we, we have a good working relationship with them when it comes to these boundaries. This area just happens to be in the Rapid Valley Sanitary District boundary. So when it comes to this, we actually met, Mike and all of us met one day and kind of came to an agreement on how this is going to work. I mean, this is not uncommon for us to oversee work in the Rapid Valley Sanitary District and, and take their sewage and furnish them water, so. I guess what's your, do you have a more specific question?
No, I, that probably just answers it. I thought it was a little bit unusual in the city limits, and, and I'm sure there's other areas maybe that are, that are treated the same.
Yeah, we have several. It does get a little complicated at times, but for the most part, the, the line is pretty clear, and we work with the sanitary district, so.
And so there's not been any significant problems with that relationship?
Not from the engineering perspective, no.
And I was concerned, and there's been some discussion about street parking, you know, kind of Eric, what Eric alluded to, if there was some kind of a get-together there. Where, what do the people do if they had the, a family gathering and there were six cars?
Yeah, Vicki?
So this is similar to a lot of apartment projects, too. There's kind of a crisis going on in our community right now where more and more people have to live in an apartment unit because the price of the units have gone up, and we find that we are significantly short parking. And folks have got to manage their projects. There needs to be covenants in place that mandates what is allowed for each of the homeowners and/or those that are going to be leasing property, and it falls back on them. We routinely have to reach out to other developers and remind them that they've exceeded their parking allowance and they need to rein it in, or we will start towing vehicles. So again, it is a collaboration where, for these considerations to be granted, there needs to be a level of responsibility, that they're communicating well, and that they're maintaining that obligation even as the project ages. Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yeah, Vicki?
So here a few years ago, there were some developers that came in to us just to visit about creating a new zoning district just for small homes. We labored over it. We worked through many of the components that are sitting before you today. And the design that this developer has brought forward is in part because of some conversations we shared with them that if we're going to reduce lot sizes and potentially setbacks and potentially parking, then we need to ensure that these remain affordable here and going into the future. And two of the easiest ways to do that is to mandate that there can be no basement or no garage. Those are areas that can be completed later and expanded in livable footprint of the building. If you look at the homes along St. Patrick's Street that are east of Fifth Street, these are small footprint homes with a full basement. Many of them are four-hundred-and-fifty up, four-hundred-and-fifty down. When those were first built, many of them did not have finished basements. They did not have garages, but they were sitting on full-size lots. Extremely affordable housing, kind of a, this was our post-war housing project for Rapid City. Over time, people have finished the basements, built garages, the garages have been converted into family rooms, and the value of those homes, in many instances, they are no longer affordable. So even in this situation, after meeting with us, they did a project home, I believe it was Philadelphia Street, and it captured those components. It's a one-story structure with no basement and no garage. You're allowed to have carport, but no garage. The, the retention of affordability stays with that project. And so it's refreshing to see that what they've brought forward, even though not required, it implements those plans. So for us, to see this built out and to see if that affordability does lock and load, not only for the initial buyer but future buyers, it will help us to determine if the ordinance that we crafted should be brought forward. And may I just add that we no sooner had the ordinance ready to be brought to you for consideration when the developer said pause. The housing market is so hot right now, everyone wants bigger and better. I have no builders that will build this, and so there was no push to bring forward that small home zoning ordinance. We have here today a builder that is interested in, it's, it's a smaller profit margin for each residential structure, but it meets a housing need that we seriously have in our community. And even with the model home that was built on Philadelphia Street, they had indicated at that that they were bringing forward this subdivision, and at first, they weren't going to do nearly as many small homes, as many small lots, but their wish list of individuals that were wanting to pre-purchase these lots was so extensive that they came back to us and said, "We need to expand the number of small lots because the market is there." For many, this is the only affordable home that they can get into, and it may be that first home, and you can kind of move up in sizes as your career advances. So this is going to give a lot of individuals an opportunity to be a first-time homeowner. So somewhat experimental, we'll be watching this one closely. If this does work the way that we are anticipating it will, you may actually see an ordinance come forward so that the next one doesn't have to require the planned development. It can go straight from plating to building permit.
Eric Haicas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like this layout. I think it's appropriate. I'm really a big fan of the smaller home, smaller building footprint, smaller lot. I think it's the future for our community. The majority of my questions were answered. I do have one parting shot, and that is, I'll be supporting this project. So to, to Mike's comment, to Mike Toohey's comment about he's offered up a lot for a park, and actually, I do have a question, so, for the planner. I think that the, that the Parks Department resources are very much overstretched as it is in this community. So I think it's a great idea of sending, sending ideas like this to parks, but then we have to send them money, too, I think, as a community in order for them to be effective, so. And I'm not saying that this developer needs to do that. I'm saying this community needs to get that Parks Department better funded in order for them to be successful in a growing community such as ours, so. So if we don't get a small parklet on the project site, does the planner have some information as to what's near this to offset this density? Is there trails and parks and third space near these lots in the, you know, one-mile radius or two-mile radius for those people to gather? It's not, it's a strange question, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just couldn't let Cassie try to figure this one out. As you all know, she's very new to our department. So currently, right now, we do not have a provision within our subdivision regulations that, that allow us to require park space with a residential project. We had brought someone, something forward, and it's been several years, and it did not get through council. It's tight right now for developers to bring in all of the requirements for a subdivision and then also donate land. and then also donate land and maintain it. We've had success with some developers that have brought forward parks with the intent that they'll be pocket parks and that the homeowners association will maintain it, but that wanes over time. And then the knock on the door to Parks and Rec is, "Would you please take over ownership and maintenance? We'd like to gift this to the city." And so with eyes wide open, we are recognizing that as we look at these, we probably do need to bring forward regulations that we can mandate, that after so many lots, that there needs to be a green space and then have it in place that this goes on to the city system and then collaborate very closely at the onset of each calendar year to see what projects are coming forward, where utilities exist and we anticipate additional residential density so that we can get Parks and Rec budgeted appropriately. In this case, there was discussion about requiring a park, but it kind of defeats the purpose of wanting to capture that affordable housing. We are in such desperate need of affordable housing. If these were all of regular 6,500 or larger size lots and to this density at this extreme limit of the city, because as you recall, we just recently annexed this in, so this is our northeast boundary in this area. It, we did not want to lose the affordability aspect of it. We have a good walking system. As you go further south, we've got a school that will provide for opportunities for families to take walks, get on a playset. We talked about this a lot. For us to truly require it, we need to stand an ordinance up and we'll be looking for your support at that time that would bring forward the provision where we can say, it's a formula, X number of lots, you need a park with a minimum lot size appropriately to accommodate those families. It's just not in place yet.
I'd just add, we, in the west essential part of Rapid City, the silver lining of the flood, if there is one, is the massive recreation that can happen along the floodway. We still have the creek going east, we still have a rail bed going east that the city has not pushed ahead with creating those recreation opportunities, you know, for the eastern side of the city as it grows. And I think those two options need to be considered. Mike Kwasny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I foresee parking being a real problem here and I think it's something we should, as we develop something like this, we should look to see how that is affected. And I know that we can't necessarily take out two lots and provide parking in the middle of this, but I'm concerned that the parking is a problem and I think it's something that we should watch and see how we can manage that maybe a little better. I know to make affordable housing, you've got to make the lots and you've got to use them all properly. The other question, I, we'll get to that, but I also had, the school is about how far away. It has a nice playground down there, but is that within two miles, mile and a half? So there is some play area to that point, but I guess I just foresee that the parking, and as we move forward, the challenge, and it looks like maybe we have somebody that wants to address that at the podium now, so...
Mr. Skoll?
Thank you, Andy Skoll. What is this, Enden Development, developer-owner of the project. Couple things, I think East Middle School is about three blocks away and they have a beautiful track and playground, et cetera, there. In terms of parking, I want to put a little context around that. So my mom lives in a 1,000-square-foot townhome on a 55-foot lot, okay? These are 50-foot lots, they're just not townhomes connected together. So you kind of got to get some circumference around your mind. If you were to build a 6,500 lot, typically be 60-foot wide by about 110 feet deep or 65 by maybe 100 feet deep. That would be your standard 6,500 lot size. So at 50 feet, or somewhere between 10 to 15 foot less. Now, in that, like take my mom's twin home for instance, that only requires two parking spots, one in the garage and one outside. So yeah, we're losing anywhere from, you know, five to 15 feet in terms of frontage, but we're providing those three parking spots. So I think that's just important context around the parking. And I understand your concept, Mike, in terms of, hey, do we provide more parking in different areas? I think it really comes down to parks and open land and those are all good and important topics to address. However, it does come down to affordability. I think some things that the community doesn't realize is it used to be free to run power, datacom and utility, the utility companies. Not, this development will cost us almost $4,000 a lot just to get those utilities to the lot. We have other developments where we're exceeding $6,000. So when you talk about affordability, you've got to really look at, every foot of street costs something. And unfortunately, in order to get that affordability somewhere, things have to give. And so we're being approached by a lot of pressures from different areas. I do feel that we've accommodated with that extra parking spot in terms of providing that onsite versus offsite. I think it's a reasonable concern, but if we go to a collector's street, we wind this thing out 10 feet, now we've lost that affordability as well. So it's a magic crunch there that we're all having to deal with as, not only our community, all over the place, right? So hopefully that helps put some context around that. But just doing some simple math, that's how I can, you know, rationalize the frontage in terms of on-street parking and I think it's, the math makes sense.
And I appreciate what you bring to the planning and so forth on those. It's a tough one to go with this affordable housing when you start with lots that cost what they cost and then you just start building on that. So I can appreciate what you're doing. I just think maybe as a community, we should look and monitor. I mean, I think this is going to pass, I'm going to support it, but I think we should monitor and see what problems we're developing so we move forward and we don't continue to give problems to the people that need the help, which is every one of the people that are going to be living in these homes, so...
We kind of, I kind of view, or we view this development, it's like modern-day Robinsdale. If you go through Robinsdale, most of those homes are about 900 to 1,000 square feet. And I have family that, my grandparents lived in the neighborhood, my aunts and uncles, you know. And what's interesting there is they are relatively small lots, they're probably a little wider but not as deep. They're more of a long home versus a deep home and we're going deep homes because of the cost of that frontage road and the utilities, et cetera. But a lot of those older generational homes, I guess we call it, which are now coming back around, you have that additional parking, you know, there's, the driveway goes past, there's always the, the front door's never used, you always use the side door, right? And then the parking goes past. And that's kind of the idea that we're bringing forth here. So it's kind of a, I like to think we're doing something innovative, we're really not. We're just regenerating what was done, you know, 60 years ago.
Yep. We've gotten used to bigger homes as a community and we're probably going to have to go the other way. So I appreciate what you bring and what you're trying to accomplish. It's just something that I think we need to monitor. The parking is, everybody has a car and so I foresee the parking is going to be a bit of a problem there. So it's just something we should monitor as we move forward. So, thank you.
Haven?
This probably maybe for Vicki, I guess. You mentioned one of the other developments and things changed a little bit after the approval. Is, if our approval of this proposal, does that fix the plan as far as the size of the homes?
Vicki?
So based on the setbacks, we have to kind of work backwards. Based on the setbacks, that means that it's, can be a maximum 24 by 40 and it can, they can be smaller. But what was presented to you today was the very biggest footprint that would be, that would fit on these lots. So yes, the sizes presented would be the very largest. They could go smaller, provide additional setback, but nothing could be larger.
Sorry to interrupt, Rob Pepel again. I just thought I should address that. Vicki is correct, that is the largest size, but most all of our sizes are in the, let's say 650, like the sample home that we built on Philadelphia, to 850. So the largest home is a two-bedroom. So, you know, that addresses parking a little bit too. So these are going to be one-bedroom and two-bedroom. There is no three-bedroom or four-bedroom like we had anywhere else. This is one-bedroom and two-bedroom home. So parking will be less because of that, I think, so... The other thing that we experienced over at East Philadelphia, we advertised it for one week saying, "Hey, public," you know, just on Facebook only, "come out and see this and tell us what you think." And we had over 350 people sign up to be on a reservation list. And the interesting thing about that is over 30% of those people are 65 years and older. And they said, "We don't want our six-bedroom home anymore, but we've given up looking, so this would be great. We want to buy this and put our six-bedroom home on the market, or five-bedroom home." And, you know, we didn't expect that at all. We thought it was all going to be younger people, but 30-some percent were 65 years and older. And these are all going to be one level, no basements, no garage. I think the setbacks dictate the size of the home pretty clearly that it's not going to be big home and we're not going to do basements. We want to do this as a public service for our community and, and so it's really going to be that 650 to 800 square foot is really where we're going to be at with most of our plans and most of what people have asked us for, so... Any other questions?
I don't think so. Eric Heikus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move approval of this item, initial planned development overlay with staff stipulations as noted in the report.
All right. Eric Heikus made the motion to approve with stipulations as listed and Mike Kwasny seconded that motion. Any other comments, discussion on the motion to approve? Vince?
Just have a question about the area that's going to be used for, I guess, drainage and where the underground drainage is already in place. Well, how is the, how is that going to look on, I mean, is there anything, is there any kind of topography issues on it or can just anyone in the community come and use this area?
Mr. Chair?
Vicki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great comment. This is the initial planned development. I think the discussion today has been really advantageous for staff and I'm sure the developers as well. They will be bringing forward a final planned development plan. We'll get more details on that prospect of providing some green space onsite with that application. So if you'll bear with us, we'll bring that forward as part of the final.
Thanks, Vicki.
Mike Kwasny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Something was brought up that it sounded like there's some older people that are buying these homes. If I buy this home and I have a barbecue at my house, we're in trouble because I have 14 grandchildren. I've got, we get back into that parking situation and we're going to, I don't know where they're going to park, so...
All right. Any other comments on the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I think that's the end of the regular agenda today. Staff items, Vicki?
Well, first, I'd like to introduce all of you to Jessica Olson. Jessica is our new current Planning Division Manager, a title that I held for 20-something years. We're excited to have her on board. She's been here two weeks?
Is this my third?
Maybe third. She's already blowing me away. She's bringing me things, saying, you know, "We could do it like this and it would be so much quicker and easier and, and it's exciting." It's just a new breadth of how we have been looking at items and communicating amongst ourselves internally in order to ensure that we are not missing things and it's refreshing. So you'll see Jessica here sitting beside me every meeting and we'll have the other planners join us as they have items on the agenda. So we won't see Kip and Sarah and all of them at every meeting, but they'll be on standby when needed. We are looking at bringing forward some ordinance amendments, especially since we've increased our staff and filled some open positions. I wanted to just list a couple of them and then I want you guys to think about different ordinance amendments that you've thought we should be looking at and we can add those to the list. And it's not something that we need to discuss after I'm finished, just think about it and we can talk about it at an upcoming meeting. But for now, as you know, we are all frustrated with our requirement of landscape islands and then they have to go through a variance or an exception to do a peninsula, and so we're looking at bringing forward an ordinance amendment that would address that. Townhomes. Currently, townhomes are permitted in all zoning districts except LDR1. And there, they're allowed within a planned development. And it's just an unnecessary step. Those should be permitted as well, especially in our time where our housing costs are so high and if someone can get into a townhome and that will reduce the opportunity to have homeownership. So we'll be looking at removing the requirement for a PD for a townhome in LDR1. Remember, it's already permitted in LDR2, MDR, HDR, et cetera. Oversized garages. Think about the number of conditional use permits we have seen in the last few years for oversized garages. Several years ago, the maximum garage size was 1,000 square feet. We were inundated as families wanted bigger homes, more toys, bigger garages, and we did an ordinance amendment to increase the footprint to 15% or 30% of the gross floor area of the structure, whichever was larger. Well, the 1,500 square foot is no longer, meets the requirements of most. We grant many, many exceptions internally so that you're not even seeing those that are less than a 20% expansion from what is allowed. So we need to take a hard look at that and look at criteria and what we can do to reduce that number of applications that come before you. And just so you know, other than one, a conditional use permit for an oversized garage has never been denied. So that kind of speaks for itself too. Open space. When we're looking at a lot of apartment projects, even something similar to what we're just talking about today, we need to look at where we require open space and what is the definition of open space. We want to make sure that it is usable property, not just the open space between the structure and the property line, which is also known as a setback. So we'll be working on bringing forward a definition for that. Landscape regulations, this has been high on our list for some time. We'll be reaching out to Eric Heikus to join us on that. Randy Fisher, another landscape architect in our community, has volunteered. We've got a council member that has volunteered as well. And we truly need to revise the regulations so that the landscaping that is required actually has an impact, an aesthetic impact. Right now, if you've got a grove of trees that existed and a draw on the backside of a property and you come in to develop it, you get to count those trees towards your landscape points and nobody sees those. So it really defeats the purpose of why we do require landscaping. And then parking regulations. As you know, and you're driving around town, we routinely see many of our parking lots almost completely vacant. There are certain times, maybe on a Black Friday, that might change, but overall, we overpark a lot of our uses. And as a result, we have a sea of pavement that goes to a lot of sustainability and environmental concerns and issues for our community. There are some uses that we need to increase parking. Apartments is one of them. The 1.5 parking spaces for apartment unit is no longer sufficient. At a minimum, we need to go two. And visiting with many of the department developers, they've already gone to two because they know that otherwise they're going to be short parking and then they can't keep occupancy inside their units. So we'll be doing a lot of public outreach on both the landscape and the parking regulations. We'll be doing a lot of cleanup. There's just some grammatical errors in some of the text, smaller clarification where we've got one part of the ordinance that says you can have a six-foot fence and then another part it says if you're zoned this, you can have an eight-foot fence. We'll do those cleanups. But what we want you to do is to think about things that you have seen that don't make sense to you or you think we need to take a look at. Our community is changing. Land use in general is moving forward throughout the nation. If there's something that's archaic in how we are doing things and you want us to look at it, let us know and we'll take a look at that. So be prepared, you're going to start seeing some ordinance amendments almost on every agenda. And that's all I had for today.
All right. Roger?
Well, thank you. Now that Vicki's given you your homework assignment, for those that remember Todd Pekosh, he will, is returned to us and him and I will be swapping seats here intermittently as time goes on. So for those that know Todd and worked with Todd, he's a remarkable engineer, hugely valuable to us and... and we're glad to have him back on staff, so that's all I had.
All right. Anything from the commission? Motion to adjourn, maybe?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Karen made the motion to adjourn, and Vince seconded that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
I'll send the request through you about that drainage lot to get an answer from people in this team about if they want to do it. The idea, I think, would be is that in the end, when we get done, whether it's this first phase or when we get done with the entire subdivision, I don't know which one to ask you anymore. But the idea is that we really want to turn those over to you.
Sure.
The big drainage lot, I'm not...